Recording has started.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order the City Council Study Session, September 24, 2018. It's 5:30, and we will start with roll call.
Deputy Mayor Baggett?
Excused.
Councilmember Layer Brown?
Here.
Councilmember DeCorsi?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Twelveman Mau?
Here.
Councilmember Wales?
Here. Are there... We'll move on to number two, Roman numeral number two. Do we have any announcement, reports, or presentations other than those listed? Okay, then, we will move on to Agenda, Roman numeral three, Agenda Items for Council Discussion. We will start with ordinance number 6690. And, great, please take the table, introduce yourself, and we're ready to go.
Good evening, and thank you, Councilmember Wales. Kevin Fuer, Assistant Finance Director. With me you have Bob Brooks, our Financial Planning Manager, and Angie Sanchez with FCS Group. They're serving as our rate study consultant. So this topic will be very familiar to council. In your packet, you have a proposed ordinance that would amend utility rates for the period 2019 through 2022. This ordinance incorporates the guidance that we received from council on preferred rate options. That occurred in April and June. And Angie has prepared a presentation. Can you walk us through how we got to where we're at today, review each of the utility preferred rate options, and finally close out with the results of the wholesale water rate analysis?
Great, thank you, and good evening. And so, as Kevin had mentioned, we have a presentation here that will look relatively familiar to you all, again, based on the workshops on April 23 and June 11 regarding the retail rates. And so, the retail water, sewer, and stormwater rates is what we had discussed at those particular study sessions. And so, as in a quick review, and we'll dive down in terms of the specifics of the utilities, but in general, what it was looking like was that water for the 2019 through 2022 time period was about a 3.4% increase per year, and it was mainly driven by the capital needs of that particular utility. Sewer looked like it was about 2.4% per year with that particular timeframe. And then stormwater was about 1.7%. And so, again, that's just a quick summary. We will talk about the changes for each of those utilities as we move forward in the presentation. What is new, however, today is the update of the wholesale rates. And so, we have not broached that particular update since that to this time. And so, we'll provide to you what those particular initial findings were in terms of the cost of service for those two wholesale customers, so that's the City of Algonah as well as Water District 111. In particular, to Water District 111, there have been some service changes to that particular district. And so, they're moving from an interruptible... Or, excuse me, they're moving to an interruptible wholesale customer from more of a take-or-pay. And so, we did have to look at that a little differently than has been historically looked at. And again, we'll walk through that particular analysis with you as well. Any other proposals that we are bringing forward this evening are looking to have the rate implementation January 1 of 2019. So in terms of diving into the sewer retail rate options, as you can see in that graphic, when we looked at the overall rates for the utility and performed the cost-of-service analysis, which looks at, you know, how are individual customer classes paying their particular cost of service, it did show that we did need some recalibration in terms of between the single-family and the non-single-family customers. And so, a single-family was paying a little bit higher than their cost of service, and non-single-family a little bit lower. The direction that we received from council is that the philosophy has been that we want to have everybody paying their cost of service. And so, that is the approach we have taken in terms of the recommendation. And so, it is proposed that over the four-year time period that we would get to fixing those particular cost-of-service inequities by the year 2022. In particular, for the sewer utility, there really were not a whole lot of changes structurally. So right now, the single-family customer is charged a flat rate per month, and the non-single-family customer is a flat rate plus a usage charge over 7,500 cubic feet. And so, that is maintained, so there were no recommendations to change that rate structure. And we also wanted to continue to pass through the treatment charge from King County Metro since it does make up about 68, 69% of your overall cost for that utility. That is recommended, just continue to pass that through. In terms of the stormwater utility, that was the utility that was about 1.7% increase per year. What we noted in stormwater utility is that that rate structure was pretty complex in terms of its intent, which was very proactive at its time in terms of trying to give various different credits for detention, retention, and water quality. And that was before the MPDES requirement. So again, the city was really trying to take some proactive measures in terms of trying to promote effective stormwater management. But as we evolved over time, permits have matured over time. Really, what we're seeing is that we're crediting for infrastructure that is now not, is now just required. And so, you know, what we looked at is how could we potentially simplify the particular stormwater rate structure? And so, the recommendation is to go to move to a single monthly rate per equivalent service unit. And so, the single-family customer would be one ESU. The non-single-family customer would change from a base rate plus an ESU rate to simply an ESU rate, hence kind of simplifying that particular rate structure. We also wanted to, very similarly to sewer, resolve some of the inequities that we were seeing in the cost of service, if you can see that graph there. And so, over time, by the year 2022, that is really what we're trying to do. And so, we're kind of trying to rebalance the particular classes so everybody's getting closer to that 100% cost of service in terms of what you see there. What this will help us do is what we had talked to you about is possibly thinking about in that next rate study or the 2023 time period, moving to just one ESU rate and really simplifying that for everyone. And that is the most common rates structure for stormwater utilities in the industry. In terms of the water rate, that again was the utility that had about 3.4% annual increase. And in this particular case, the rate structure is recommended to change from a per-account kind of charge, so it doesn't differentiate between meter sizes, to one that actually does differentiate between meter size. That is largely recommended simply because the larger meters do require additional infrastructure upsizing as well, and which will result in higher maintenance and replacement-type costs. And so, we're really just trying to say, if you have a larger-sized meter, there are different costs that are associated with us having to plan for in order to be able to serve you for your peak day requirements as well as just your general overall needs. And so, that is the recommendation, is to move to meter size for all customer classes. We'll continue with the existing customer classes. So one of the recommendations was, we mean, maybe we're going to condense some of those customer classes. We said, let's leave that at this particular time because we are making some changes. And then, we'll look, we'll look at that potentially condensing as we get over to that next rate study time period potentially.
And how many, how many homes or facilities have those bigger units? Do we know?
Probably not off the top of my head.
Very few residential customers.
Yeah, mainly.
More so than the commercial.
Vingli schools?
Schools, yes.
Oh, Councilmember DeCorsi.
I was going to ask a little differently. So on page 7 of 51, we have a table that shows the meter sizes and associated monthly charges. Do we know how many customers we have with each of those meter sizes?
We do, I don't know if we have them currently today to answer that question right now, but we could provide you with that.
We could, yeah, we could have that, and we give us a little better opportunity to understand.
How many? Yeah, the largest, largest for sure of the meter sizes will be that smaller size because, again, that's the majority of your single-family customers.
So have we, have we already changed all of them, pretty much?
When you say changed?
I know that we were going to change all the meters. Have they all been changed?
To the automatic?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
On... I'm good either way.
Me too.
Our meter sizes on residential, they're basically would be 5" 3/4" and 1". I've heard concern over some people that had no choice, or were given a choice, a meter size at a residential, and have a 1-inch meter, but would object to having to pay, well, January 1, 4 cents more for having that 1-inch meter that they really had no input in.
Maybe Ingrid could help us with this question a little bit.
Sure. So, the probably confusing point of that is several years ago, we actually changed our standard to require a 1-inch service line for all of our residential 3/4-inch meters. The meter size is still chosen by whoever is applying for that meter based upon their usage. So, we didn't, we haven't given somebody a 1-inch when they only needed a 3/4-inch. They've come in and said they have so many fixtures in their house that drives the need for a 1-inch meter. What we have done is, given the time that we've replaced the services, we've put in a 1-inch service line. That doesn't change what that meter size is.
I understand that, but this particular constituent was saying that his house has a 1-inch meter on it. Would you be willing to go back and change to a 3/4-inch meter?
They can certainly go through the process of waiting for changing out that meter, and there would be a cost for that because there's certainly staff time and effort to go through and change that meter out to the 3/4-inch. But the bigger question is, there's typically something driving why they have a 1-inch meter in their usage. So what is driving that? What is the fixtures?
The way it was explained to me is the city employee coming out in the truck says, you want a 3/4 or you want a 1-inch? I'll take a 1-inch.
And I don't know that I've ever seen that actually happen because 1-inch meters are not common in the system, especially for residential units. We have, I believe, about 100 and... 300 and 30? Out of 16,000, 16,000 or fewer?
So maybe, John, you could get them in contact with Ingrid.
Yeah, I think he probably has.
I believe I know who that person is, and I believe I've already responded to that.
Oh, okay. See, she's on the spot. She's Johnny, or Ingrid on the spot.
Well, you probably know his, or Tale of Wool better than I.
Yeah, and I mean, overall, we're talking about maybe 300, a little over 300 meters out of the entire system that is 1-inch for residential use. Again, typically, that's because they have either a greater number of fixtures in the house, so therefore, they may have a higher water demand, or they have a deduct meter for their irrigation system. So it's coming off that domestic service, so they need the larger meter. It could be any number of things, but they need to evaluate whether or not a 3/4-inch is actually going to meet their need and provide the water pressure that they actually need to serve the house.
While we have Ingrid here, any other specific questions for Ingrid?
Or Lisa, while we have Lisa here.
Yeah. Stand ready.
Yep.
Please continue.
And so, just a little bit more information. So the differential between the 3/4 and the 1 on that monthly charge is about $2, just to get, so we can kind of understand the overall change.
$2 a month?
And so, similar with the two utilities that we just talked about, the overall goal, again, is to move to the 100% cost of service, kind of recalibrating and getting people closer to the cost of service by the year 2022 with the idea that as we look out in the future, it is possible that the next recommendation would be that we consolidate the classes over time. Because what we were noticing was, as we phased in cost-of-service over time, the non-single-family volume rate started to merge closer together. So the question becomes, well, why do you have all these different customer classes that are really costing? So now, I'm going to transition over from the retail rates with water sewer, storm retail rates, and talk more about the wholesale rates. And this is the new material in terms of this particular update for these particular customers. And so, you currently have two wholesale customers, City of Algonah as well as Water District 111. City of Algonah is fairly straightforward. You know, in their, both of their agreements, actually, it does say that rates would be based on a cost-of-service analysis. And so, since we were doing the retail, we carried that forward to update the wholesale customer rates. City of Algonah, again, is a typical full requirement type of customers. There's no specific, unique really circumstances that has changed from what has been done in the past. And so, that was a pretty typical update for that particular customer. We did base the charges for meter sizes as the same as the retail rates. So to, again, so they have a 6" and an 8", whatever that particular rate schedule is for the retail customers, that is what also the Algonah would also get for the particular charges as well. And so, that maintains consistency as well through that. The rates have been established for the 2019 through 2022 time period, and so, we have documented that and updated those. And the rates continue to recover full cost-of-service. And that was really the intent of the agreement, is there is an established somewhat methodology that has been used year over year to update those particular rates. And that similar methodology has been used again because there really wasn't any change in service level for Algonah.
A quick little question. Ingrid, do they have the automatic readers? So do we sell the water to Algonah or Algonah's residents?
To Algonah.
Okay, so we only need one big meter for them?
Yeah, so there's a couple of big meters for them, and then, again, meters for Water District 111.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. So as we transition over to Water District 111, that now becomes a bit of a different approach in terms of the history of how those particular rates were established. So still based on recovering the full cost of service. However, because their status in terms of service request has changed, they are an interrupt, interruptible, excuse me, wholesale water rate structure now instead of the continuous ready-to-serv upon request. And so, what that has to do is we really had to look through all of your assets and what particular assets provide service and identify how does that service level change, change in terms of how we're going to be recovering costs from Water District 111. So it took a little bit more kind of digging in terms of how do you establish an equitable rate for them since it is a different service level change. And so, we'll go into that in the next couple of slides. And so, for Algonah, this might answer one of the questions. And so, and the table essentially looks at the existing 2018 rate and then the proposed 2022. Really, the main difference there, you can see in 2018, the 6-inch, excuse me, and the 8-inch had that same 719, 7591 rate. Here, we're now, because again, we're going to meter sizes for the retail customers as well, their proposed 2019 rate is the rate base for the 6-inch is different than the 8-inch. And so, that's why you see in 19, 7236 versus the 9347 for that larger meter. And then, the charge for 100 cubic feet is, again, what has been charged historically. And so, you can see the rate of change in terms of the proposed 2019 through 2022. There is an assumed 3% kind of CPI escalation factor on that volume charge, and so, that's why it's increasing. So you kind of set the rate, and then you increase it annually with the CPI.
Councilmember DeCorsi.
So the difference between the rate of 2018 and 2019, so you have quite a decrease there. What drives that?
Yeah, really, what happened there was the decrease in Tacoma purchases, I believe, that we had in the budget.
Okay.
And so, it was about half, you know, in terms of that particular line item. So proposed, in terms of the Water District 111 rate, now that's going to be a little different. So now, we have three different rate structures that we're talking about. And so, the first one is the standby charge, and that recovers the cost to maintain, repair, and replace delivery assets. So I want to kind of focus on that delivery assets and provide the ability to serve if and when requested, assuming that, you know, the city has available water. So again, it's a request for service. If you have water, then you provide service. And that particular standby charge essentially is we're ready and waiting in terms of our particular delivery assets to provide service when requested. And so, there is a system in place that needs to be maintained and kept in good repair in terms of just, again, being that standby particular customer. And so, that is what that particular charge is all about, is that there is a fixed charge per month that will be charged to Water District 111 as a standby charge regardless of if you're using water or not. And again, it's to recover those particular costs that are sitting and waiting, ready to deliver. Water should be requested. The usage charge is another charge, and that would only be paid if water is requested and delivered. Okay, and so, that particular charge, again, would simply just be if you use water. And again, we'll show you what that charge calculated to be. And then, the purchase water surcharge is only applicable if Water District 111 requests water and the city does not have existing source to provide. And they have to then go to Tacoma to provide this source. And essentially, we're wanting, we're just kind of basically passing through that particular charge in terms of that being.
Now, Ingrid, is this all electronic so that nobody gets on the phone and calls you at home on a Sunday night and says, the water's low, and you call Tacoma, and then Tacoma does this, that, and the other? How is?
The system would actually let the staff know that we're having, we're having an issue in the water system, and then they would go out and turn it on if necessary. I don't know that they can actually turn it remotely at that particular time. They have to physically go out and turn it on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, up by your house?
Might be.
She'll be turning it off.
I need the 1-inch line.
And so, those are the three charges that, when we updated the rate structures for Water District 111, we calculated for that particular now new service level. And so, these are the rates that are associated with that particular approach. And so, the standby charge per month would be about 1139 per month, so $1,139 per month. That would be paid, again, regardless if there was water use or not. And then, the volume charge, the top line, the $1.95, would be paid, again, if City of Auburn has source available. And if we had to purchase from Tacoma, there would be an additional $3.31 to the $1.95 that would kick in, again, only if we had to purchase from Tacoma to serve their particular requested water needs. The proposed charges, again, are based on the cost of service, ready-to-serv upon request type of service level that they have changed to. And it has been assumed in 2019 that the analysis assumes no actual water delivery. So we're only assuming that we would only get paid the standby charge per month. And so, no additional revenue is assumed from volumetric type rates. So definitely a change in that service level and the revenue received. And so, with that, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions. You know, the retail rate one, was it a little bit of a recap in terms of what we had in April and June? But the wholesale one was, was a new, was a new presentation and of material.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The question I have is, how does this look, these increases with respect to the historical trend? Is it, is it a normal trend line? Or is it less or is it more than?
So for the wholesale or the retail?
Either.
So I would say in terms of, excuse me, in terms of the retail, you know, you're in the inflationary-type increase levels. And so, that has probably been historically kind of what has been essentially implemented over time. And so, you're still staying within those inflationary increases, which is nice to see and so that we're not getting so far out that, you know, we are having double-digit type of increases. That's what everybody likes to try to, try to avoid if possible. And so, that is encouraging, that you are continuing just trying to keep up with those costs and implementing moderate rate increases. No one likes rate increases in general, however, we understand that. But because your systems are aging, we need to invest in our system. Those are just costs that we can't avoid, and so, we do have to increase rates. But being able to keep them within the CPI adjustments is great. On the wholesale side of things, Algonah actually, their volume rate actually went down as you had noticed in terms of, you know, the costs that we're able to recover. And that was strictly because there was a change in the amount of purchased water from Tacoma. We're trying to be changing operations and becoming more efficient in that regard. So that actually is a benefit. And then, it's really hard to compare Water District 111 because they just are a completely different service take. So, but again, we really, again, looked very in detail in terms of what were those particular assets that were providing service and said, you know, really only capturing the delivery of those delivery assets and not making them pay for supply assets when they were not taking waters. So really focusing on, there's strictly just that delivery system in place that we want to make sure we're capturing and keeping sufficient dollars to maintain, maintain them in good repair.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holman?
How do Auburn's rates look with our neighboring jurisdictions?
Very good, actually. I'm not sure if it was the April or the June presentation, we provided some bill comparisons. And I think in all utilities, you were probably middle, if not low-middle of the pack in terms of your neighboring utilities. And so, you're, in terms of comparison with neighboring utilities, you're very competitive in terms of the particular rates you're able to charge.
The exception to that was storm, and that's one of the reasons that we're proposing to do the structural changes that we're talking about.
Yeah, and the storm is actually interesting in that that, the single-family rate is actually going down. So it's, you know, $20 today, but over time, as you're recalibrating to your cost of service, your ultimate rate, I think, would end up, I just had it right here.
1588.
1588, so 20 to the 1588. And so, it's actually going to be a decrease for those particular customers. Again, we need to phase in that recalibration so we're able to give that, that rate relief. But you will see a lower rate for the single-family class for storm.
Up here on Water District 111, I think that if I lived up there and I saw that there was potential for home growth, that I might be looking to Covington or someplace else to get a water agreement. Is my logic off, or have I missed something because I'm not a wholesale water rates expert?
So, a couple of years ago, Water District 111 decided not to extend their take-or-pay agreement with us because they negotiated a deal with Covington to take water from Covington. And so, that is their primary source instead of Auburn being their primary source. So now, what they're doing, because they're not take-or-pay, is they're not taking much of any water from us at all. So that's why we're going into more of that standby charges and an increased cost to having that standby situation because that's the money we're going to get continuously. We'll only every once in a while get the commodity charge for them actually taking water.
So have they negotiated an agreement with Covington?
They did that a couple of years ago.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilmember Holman?
Just for background information, Covington is part of Cascade Water Alliance?
And so, that's part of what they've negotiated into.
City Attorney, where do we go from here after this presentation if there are no more questions on this ordinance?
If there are no more questions, we'll just put this on a future agenda for council action, probably next week.
Okay. Councilmember Holman?
Is there any interest amongst my colleagues of going further into the 3/4-inch, 1-inch meter to tease that out some more, like grandfathering in existing customers or?
Councilmember DeCorsi?
I'd like to see that too, and again, you know, and please see, you kind of give us a little bit of a hint of how many meters there are, but if you did that breakdown, you show customers per size of meter, and then also look at the equity between the 3/4 and 1.
$2 a month?
Yes.
Just simple math of it.
Well, now that you brought that question up, Ingrid, at the time they built my house, or any house, you figure out how many fixtures? And I assume fixtures are sinks and dishwashers and tubs and toilets? Faucets.
If you have an irrigation system, if you have a fire sprinkler system.
So I have just a regular house, and with probably the 3/4-inch pipe. And when I run my, an after fact sprinkler system, I have no water pressure. Should I be contacting you and paying $2,000 or $3,000 extra to have my intake line changed to 1-inch so that I can run all my equipment?
So what you're telling me in that is that you're running your irrigation system off of your domestic service line?
Maybe.
So I, yeah. So, and unless you have a deduct meter, you're also potentially taking a hit on the sewer as well, although you're residential, so you shouldn't actually take that. So it's really that you're taking irrigation out of your domestic service. So the way to address that would be to do a separate irrigation meter and go through the process of getting that done. Increasing to just a 1-inch may help, may not. You'd have to look at what is that water draw at the time that you're running your irrigation system versus what you need for your house?
Okay, I'll sprinkle from 5 and shower at 9. Got it. Thank you very much. Yeah, any other questions for? Thank you very much, and we'll see you at a future meeting. Thank you.
So back to John's question.
Oh, yeah, John's question, it's mine. We want to know, John, what, how do you want to address your question?
I was just asking what the interest was of my colleagues. Claude spoke up.
Larry, I mean, Councilmember?
I'm interested in learning.
I'm interested in learning too.
And me too.
Okay.
Let's put it on the agenda.
Okay. Now, I guess the question for you is, can we continue to learn, but still should we enact this ordinance?
So can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Sorry, on what you're looking for in the comparison between the 3/4-inch and the 1-inch meter? So we understand what you're looking for us to come back with. One question, and the second question would be, are you wanting to hold off on rate increases for that conversation? Because we were originally planning to bring the resolution for the rate increases to take effect in January next week.
John, Councilmember Holman, how much lead time do you need? What information would help you and Claude with your answer regarding the 3/4-inch?
I certainly don't want to delay the rate increase, to be honest with you. This is, when I first... When I first came on the council seven years ago, we were behind the power curve. And it was very painful, twenty-some-odd percent rate increases to cover deferred maintenance. So I don't want to get in that even for a smidgen of time.
Maybe numbers of people involved in it's something that if it's really, we can look at it in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two. That's when we do the next adjustment.
I think, and I agree with John, you know, this shouldn't be delayed.
No.
But I think for for information purposes of going through meter sizes again, especially that comparison between the three-quarter and one, how many folks are really impacted by that, what does that really mean? And should there be some modifications to that or some other action that allows people to somewhat painlessly switch over? Because you said if we have a one-inch service, we're still on three-quarter meter.
That's on the new new systems. So they could also have a three-quarter inch service line with a one-inch meter on it. So it just depends upon what they asked for at the time that that was actually going in.
And I think for us, just to give us a little better understanding of how that context works and and what that means to the people that are affected by that, for me, that's the general information that I'd be asking for.
And I accept the fact that the math was done correctly. That if we have three hundred one-inch customers, that will be a difference of to our budget of six hundred dollars a month, which would have to then be spread around.
I want to clarify, so that's three hundred residential customers at one inch. The majority of your one-inch meters are commercial customers and not your residential customers. So there's there's way more than three hundred one-inch meters in our system.
I think what we're inquiring about are the residential. And so it'd be a six hundred dollar deficit that would have to be made up elsewhere, so.
So I think the consensus might be we'd like a little more information and to increase our understanding level of the issue. But we want this ordinance to move forward in the process.
Yeah, okay.
Good. Thank you very much. Thank you for a nice presentation. Now we're going to move on to ordinance six-six-nine-one. And this one has to do with open space zoning map amendments to our city zoning map.
I like maps.
I like pictures too. Welcome.
Hi. Okay. I hope that really happened, but, okay. All right. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Alexandria Teague. I am a planner two in the Department of Community Development. I am here to present ordinance six-six-nine-one, which is a technical amendment. It's actually intended to amend ordinance six-six-seven-seven, which was the open space zoning amendment. So the purpose of that is to basically adopt the map amendment exhibit that was associated with ordinance six-six-seven-seven. So as I mentioned, it's technical, it's a technical amendment in nature. Additional background for ordinance six-six-nine-one is included on page fourteen through twenty-nine of your packet. And if you have any other questions regarding ordinance six-six-nine-one, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, staff's request is to schedule ordinance six-six-nine-one for action by City Council at the regular meeting, which is October first.
Councilmember Trout.
I know that you have covered all these little green spots at one time. Is there any way you could go over them again just for a refresher?
Uh, yes. Um, I have, on page eighteen of fifty-one.
Right.
Sure. So these were these parcels that were included in ordinance six-six, six, sorry, let me back up. Six-six-seven-seven. So earlier this year, I brought forward an amendment to adopt the open space zoning, zoning district and basically amend the open space or open spaces, amend the opens, or zoning map. I'll get it. Open space and zoning map and adopt, adopt the parcels that were designated open space and basically, let me, let me just back up because I'm messing that up entirely. So let me start over. So back in two thousand, earlier this year, I basically brought forward an ordinance that was intended to amend the zoning map and the zoning code with the open space zoning district amendment. Sorry, that was a tongue twister. And so these parcels, in large part, again, they have been included in that amendment which you passed unanimous, and I believe that was at February twenty eighteen. The majority of these parcels are city-owned or they're owned by a utility. So does that answer your question? I'm sorry for being tongue twister.
So I missed that meeting, I believe. So with open space zoning, what does, what can we use this property for?
Sure. So it is actually in effect in our zoning table now on the Auburn City Code. So page twenty-three depicts the open space zoning district. And this is as it was proposed, but again, it is live on our, in our zoning code. And generally speaking, it's intended for uses that are low intensity. For example, campgrounds are permitted outright, municipal parks and playgrounds. There's a number of things that are permitted with an administrative use permit. Couple of things that are allowed with a conditional use permit. And we did have provision for a one detached single-family dwelling.
Councilmember Trout.
And where was that at? The partial was that, the family dwelling?
No, no, that's, that would be, that's allowed.
That's allowed?
Correct.
On any of these?
Correct, one.
Any other questions?
Just a statement. I think it's ready for primetime.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alexandria, thank you very much.
Same here.
We're moving on to the next item, which is a follow-up on the identity theft question. And we have with us our city attorney.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Councilmember Wales. On your desk, my apologies for not getting into the packet earlier, is my memo from September sixth. That was in your last, your last study session packet. And it's an answer to the questions that were asked at the previous session on some questions about our identity theft. I can give you all a minute if you want to scan through it. And I'll do that. Just look up when you're done.
I'm not that fast of a reader, but it has been read.
Councilmember Trout, manual.
So I I did go to the RCW nine point nine four, and I read the, so these are basically what you took out of that?
Correct. The attachment to the memorial is a copy of of the state statute nine point nine four eight four one-one, which is the decision not to prosecute authorization under state law. And those are guidelines for the prosecutor. Each case is unique and each case is different. So that's, that's the sort of general guidelines of when somebody might prosecute. Expanded further on, back on page one in section one B, is a king, an excerpt from the King County Prosecutor's filing and disposition standard. I provided a link to those earlier. And there, very specifically, they've got a specific section on that talks about when to decline on identity theft. And it allows, but doesn't require, a county prosecutor to decline where the total value is less than a thousand dollars. And and there's some other exceptions to that. So the basic rule is if it's identity theft with a value of under a thousand dollars, prosecutor may decline to prosecute. It provides further guidance that says, but you shouldn't necessarily make that decision if there's been three or more victims or if there's evidence that they're manufacturing identifications or that the suspect was a vulnerable victim or that the information was stolen in a residential burglary or robbery or theft from a person. So those are just some, the general rule is under a thousand dollars, you don't have to. But you should look at, again, prosecutors always use fact-based case-by-case determinations. So that was the first question. Any follow-ups from that on the county standards?
Uh, yes. Councilmember DeCarcey.
So Steve, looking at the documents gave us neighboring cities on number two. Adopt RCW for identity theft, but charge it as an attempted felony. So we were talking about gross misdemeanor. So can you explain to me, charging as an attempted felony, what that means first?
Yes. So right now, identity theft is a Class C felony, depending on the dollar amount, sometimes a Class B felony. Cities like ours have the authority in district court or in their municipal court only to charge those crimes that are misdemeanors and gross misdemeanors. Otherwise, it goes to Superior Court, King or Pierce County, depending on where the crime was taken in effect. So as we discussed when we brought this forward in the first place, when the county exercises its discretion to not charge it as a felony, we have two options. One is we do nothing. The other option is, under state law, if there is a, it's, it's the, it's the law of attempted crimes. And to charge somebody with attempted crime lowers the severity of that crime by one step. So if it's a Class A felony, if it's murder, murder is a Class A felony. Attempted murder is a Class B felony, and so on and so on. So with our prosecutors, our option is if the county declines, the only option we have right now is to charge it as an attempt. That means it's a gross misdemeanor under state law, and that's how we get to it. If you let us adopt, but as we talked about in our first meeting when my chief prosecutor was here, it creates a legal fiction. You know, I actually take your ID and use it and take your checks and I commit identity theft. County declines to prosecute because it doesn't meet their charging standards. My prosecutors have to come in and convince a judge or a jury that it was only an attempt, which can be a little confusing for a finder of fact when you start going through the what do we have to prove? We have to prove that he attempted to use somebody else's ID in violation of the statute when in actuality he did, or she did, use it as a statute. So what we've been asking to do and what you agreed to do for the marijuana and controlled substances ordinances is if we adopt the crime of identity theft as a gross misdemeanor, it makes it a little bit easier to prove to a finder of fact. We just get to go in and say, no, I took the ID and I used it. There was no attempt there. The result is the same as if we charged it as an attempt. The maximum penalty for a gross misdemeanor is a year in jail and five thousand dollars, three hundred and sixty-four days in jail and a five thousand dollar fine. And it doesn't matter if we charge it as a gross misdemeanor as an attempted identity theft or if we charge it under our, our own code as an actual identity theft. The penalties are the same. It just changes what we actually, what we wind up having to prove in court and the arguments our prosecutors have to make. It makes it a little easier for us to do that.
Okay, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The question I have, it pertains to if the county declines to prosecute under a felony and we change this to gross misdemeanor, the ability to charge is? The concern I have is the fiscal impact on the city in terms of these prosecutions and any potential incarceration that could occur.
No change.
No change.
No change. If the evidence, if the evidentiary picture is strong, then my prosecutors will exercise their discretion and they will charge it as an attempted felony now. Maximum penalty, still three hundred and sixty-four days in jail and a five thousand dollar fine. If they charge it as a city identity theft violation, still a gross misdemeanor, three hundred and sixty-four days in jail and or a five thousand dollar fine. So it's not going to change, adopting this ordinance by itself will not increase our costs of prosecution or jail or anything, anything.
One of the, oh, excuse me, Councilmember Brown, no finish, please.
And no anticipated increase in the processing of these cases.
No, it's the same, it's the same sort of technical workload. It's the same file a charge, have the number of hearings, pre-trial hearings you have to have, go to trial. It just makes a difference in the argument our prosecutors have to make to the judge or the, or the jury.
Thank you.
One of the things that I requested a couple of meetings ago was a, a listing of the, the number of cases that King County had that were specific to South King County. Because are we talking, are we talking about ten of these a year? Or are we talking about three hundred? I mean, we may be making a lot of work out of just a few cases.
I missed that request, so I didn't hear that. So I don't have those.
I asked you and you said you'd send us seventy-five million pages and we could disaggregate it. I'm waiting.
I think it would still be hard to break that down for you because we would have to, we would have to find out what the original charge was and then see what got pled down or what got declined.
Yeah, I don't have the trained eye of an attorney.
Yeah, and and it would, it would, it would take us, it would probably take us staff time, it would probably take us thirty or forty hours to do that, to go through the last few years of doing that.
Give me a sample of one month.
I'll try.
And then I'll go through it and try to figure it out. Because I mean, if we're arguing just about a few cases.
I don't know. I'll see if we've got some numbers as to about how many cases we think a year that we're doing an identity theft. We should be able to, we should be able to find what we charged as an attempt, and we wouldn't do that unless the county declined.
Uh, Councilmember DeCarcey.
Here's my continued concern. For the county prosecutor, and I understand the discretion they have to do what they're doing. Fortunately, even at a thousand dollars, if you are a vulnerable person or a senior, it's a statute comes into effect for those who are in those situations. And there's extra penalties for people that are in those categories. And for the prosecutor at the county level to make a determination that it's not within their purview to prosecute, to me, it's giving those folks out there who understand that carte blanche to do what they're going to do. And identity theft is rampant. And as I said during council meeting and during the study session, unless you've ever been a victim of identity theft, you really don't know what the impact it has on you. My wife and I, when we were first hit, were in that category of seniors. Even today, almost five years later, we are still feeling the effects of identity theft. And I can't tell you who did it because the names that were given to me by my financial institution turn out to be fictitious names. But I can tell you that when it creates that kind of havoc in your life, you don't get over it very quickly. Actually, you don't get over it at all. And to this day, we're still affected by it with attacks that we have with people opening, trying to open credit card accounts in our names and situations similar to that. And we have locks on our credit reports. We have a monthly financial commitment to LifeLock to help us protect ourselves. And it's very disturbing. Now, when I go through RCW nine eight point two zero point zero two one, we talk about sentencing for crimes committed after nineteen eighty-four. And let me back up a little bit because under a attempt or a gross misdemeanor, we're looking at three hundred and sixty-four days in jail and five thousand dollar fine. As you know, and you know as very well, a Class B felony is confinement in a state correctional institution. We're not talking score, we're talking wall-to-wall. And I can tell you, I'm very familiar with wall-to-wall, having served as a, as a volunteer chaplain there for six years. By confinement in a state correctional institution for a term of ten years or by a fine amount fixed by the court of twenty thousand dollars or by both. the amount fixed by the court of twenty thousand dollars, or by both such confinement and fine. For Class C felony, confinement in a state correctional institution for five years, or a fine in the amount fixed by the court of ten thousand dollars, by both confinement and fine. That's a pretty significant deterrent. And some people who committed identity theft are not deterred by that, others maybe. But to me, lessening it back down, again, you've used the term before, and, and again, I fully appreciate the discretion that the county prosecutor has, but in my opinion, for a county prosecutor not to do their job is unacceptable. And it places the burden on the cities to come back and do something different to try and make up for what the county prosecutor basically refuses to do. And I understand the thousand-dollar thing, Steve, I understand it very well. But as I said earlier, in some cases, a thousand dollars to somebody who's a vulnerable person or is a senior is a lot of money. And perhaps the legislature needs to change that again, too, to give us a little more teeth into that process. But the legislature did, in their enactment of this, this is under, under two thousand eight, two thousand seven, sections three and four. The legislature enacted sections three and four of this act to explicitly reject the interpretation of state versus LADA, which holds that the unit of prosecution and identity theft is one act of either knowing, knowing, obtaining, possessing, using, or transferring a single piece of another identification or financial information, including all subsequent prescribed conduct without a single piece of identification. And I'm not gonna read the whole thing, that's on and on and on. The legislature specifically intends that each individual who obtains, possesses, uses, or transfers any individual's personal identification or financial information with requisite intent be classified separately and punishable separately, as provided by RCW nine point nine four A. And as you know, under that, we're looking at the, the, the crimes of, of identity theft, which are a minimum Class C felony, which again, has a pretty significant, um, penalty to it, is what the legislature, in my opinion, intended. And I understand what you've said about some of the, the little bit of wiggle room that the prosecutors may have in this, too, but I, for one, cannot agree or support any modification to something, to me, as serious as identity theft. And again, my purpose is to find a way with the prosecutor and the county levels are doing their jobs. And I'll continue to push for that. And I would invite others who have been victims of identity theft to come forward and tell their stories, because it's painful, it's serious, and it doesn't go away.
Councilmember Holman.
You know, Claude, I, I hear a ton of frustration in your voice, and I'm very empathetic. But outside of our ability to lobby the state legislators, outside of our ability to influence Dan Satterberg and his crew, the Auburn City Council has no influence, and that's outside of those bits of lobbying, that we, we could write a, a resolution to the King County prosecutor to be more aggressive on this. But we have no direct effect. But what we do have the ability to do is to increase the ease of which we go after cases that the county has already rejected. So instead of getting, sending a case, and, best way I can explain it is, when you go before a judge or jury, you don't want to leave a lot of dangling meat in your case. This puts out dangling meat. This was an actual crime, but we're prosecuting it as an attempt, as a fix. So why gerrymander? Why make it more difficult for our prosecutors to get something, whereas they run the risk of getting nothing if they're, you have a, a holdout jury? Well, he didn't attempt it, he did it, therefore, I'm voting not to acquit, or I'm voting to acquit. So, um, to me, it just makes more sense to give the best chance that this criminal, this misgrant, will get some penalty rather than nothing. And our prosecutors also have the discretion to prosecute or not prosecute. If you're, you know, they, if you make it too difficult, they might, and they have too big of a caseload, they too might choose not to go forward with it. So let's make it easy for them to go forward, so that the person at least gets some time, some fine, gets into the system as a conviction. And that sometimes is, if you're introduced into the system and you run a name, you find out that he's got a record of three misdemeanor, or gross misdemeanor, identity thefts. The next time he comes before a county prosecutor, he looks at that record, he's got three convictions as gross misdemeanor identity theft. Well, that's the, that's the thumb on the scale of justice that makes, I'm gonna prosecute him as a felon this time. So it, from a personal standpoint, I would just be furious if it happened to me. And it has, but, but it's sometimes, it's the totality of the system over a period of time. And so am I correct, if you're making a decision as a prosecutor, and you see that the person's record is, he's got two, three other convictions at the gross misdemeanor level, he just pushed it over the edge, and now I'm gonna go forward with it?
That would be something a prosecutor would absolutely take into consideration, is prior criminal history for similar crimes.
Doesn't help the two or three victims up until then, but it'll help the fourth or the fifth.
Great, but we're gonna let Yolanda...
You know, I was just gonna ask you, Mr. Holman, if you have been a victim?
I have. About two months ago.
I, I was a victim, and I, I have the frustration, as Claude does. I am still getting, uh, people wanting to change my password on my iTunes, uh, on my Apple account and stuff, and I am still, um, waiting to hear my case. And this, this has been since June, and I know it's gonna take a while, but it's, it is very frustrating when you are victimized, and you continue being victimized, and you got people trying to get, I just had somebody do a credit check, because they have all of my ID, they have all of my husband's ID, and they're going out there trying to get loans and stuff. So it's very, very frustrating. So for this right here, to make it less on a, on a person, um, it's frustrating.
I hear all of your frustration on this, and, and I think what I, I would say to you is, it doesn't lessen the crime. It doesn't change, it doesn't change what we do now. It doesn't, it doesn't lessen it from a felony to a misdemeanor, it gives us an additional tool to do this. The other thing that I think we have the opportunity to do, and I, we'll, we'll talk to the police department about this, is the county has an appeal procedure. And, you know, it's a little time-consuming, but it, under their filing determinations, that if they return something back to the city and decline, there's a process to have the chief criminal prosecutor review that. And so one of the things we can look at from a process standpoint, A, I would still like to have this tool in my prosecutor's toolbox, but one of the things I can commit to you is that we'll work with the police department, and we'll look at that review procedure. And when we get a decline memo, to the extent that it makes sense to take it up and appeal it to the chief criminal prosecutor, we'll do that.
We're, we have you waiting to speak next.
And then I'll answer Yolanda's question.
Okay, I want a chance in there, too, okay?
You're the chair, boss.
Well, no, I wanna make sure, so, well, let's make sure that everybody gets an opportunity. So we'll let you go next, then John, and, okay.
And, and I feel, fully understand and, and very sensitive, too, how this matter needs to be addressed, and why. Um, and as you mentioned, the personal frustration level is high, and it does come out. I'm also very pragmatic in understanding that we need to make those who commit crimes pay for what they've done. I understand that. And I, I guess a couple things here. So one, Steve, is that, do we know that if the county prosecutor is actually declining to prosecute those identity theft crimes that are above a thousand dollars?
We get the decline memos, and I haven't seen one recently, but we'll go back and review the ones that we have.
That would be, first of all, interesting to know which ones they're actually declining. And, and then your statement about going back for an appeal, which I figured we could do anyhow, but that, to me, makes a lot of sense, and may help us in a fashion where we could go back and, uh, pressure a little harder to, to get these done. Um, the other thing to me is, and again, believe me, I, you know, I'm all for putting people in jail when it comes to issues like this or other issues where people are committing crimes. They need to pay for what they've done. And, and the judges need to uphold that as well, because sometimes they give a little slap on the wrist and send you, send you out of the way. But, uh, people need to be, and it says punishable, people need to be punished for what they do. And they need to understand the pain of what that punishment does. In, in the criminal mindset, I guess I'll use that term, you know, when somebody knows that there's a little bit of a less chance of prison time, a little less chance of a significant monetary punishment, although many of them may not even care about that, there's a little more opportunity for them to act. And it, believe me, I really appreciate when we start looking at multiple crimes here, and the, and the thumb on the scale, that pushes that in a different direction. But to me, this does open the door even more to those who have done this or considering doing this, going, you know, gross misdemeanor, you know, I don't have a felony charge, I don't have an offender's score with a gross misdemeanor, so I'm not going from a zero to ten in relation to my prison time in, in, in state prison. I can skate by with a gross misdemeanor. If I do it twice, you know, maybe they'll, they'll not really do much more than that. And, and if I do it a third time, then I tip it a little bit, but I may take my chances. To me, it's just opening up the door more. And I could be totally wrong with that, but I'm just, in my opinion, we're, we're, you know, we have to think crafty as the criminal thinks. And I think our police department can tell us how crafty some of these people are, how they get, and some of the things they do to, to make it work to their advantage. It's a, it's a tough one to look at here for me. And, and I think the thing that will help me more is looking at the ones that the county prosecutor are not choosing to prosecute, what that means before I would go the next step in my opinion.
Councilmember Holman.
To answer Councilmember Trout-Manuel's question, yes, I have been hit by identity theft. My PayPal account was hit for two thousand and then four thousand dollars within a forty-eight hour period. That was about two, three months ago. Fortunately, my, um, alert system, the bells went off, and I was able to stop it before the payment was made, and, uh, changed my account numbers. But, yeah, it's, it was a hassle.
Yeah, it is. Okay. Well, thank goodness, nobody's wanted my identity. But my identity is very important to me. And maybe having, you know, run through an election, and having a lot of things questioned, my identity is really important to me. And we're in a, a society of soundbites, and when I hear that possibly someone's stealing my identity is a gross misdemeanor as opposed to a felony, I, I think that that has some ramifications. We know that we've done some modifications of our drug law as it relates to that, and marijuana use and some of that, as a reflection of the times. But as I talk to people in the community about their identity, they see it as a felony. Taking that, um, another step further, with my personal experience of having a daughter who has spent two and a half years learning how to speak the legal, um, jargon, I would hope that she could get up in front of a jury, and after all of this training, be able to explain the attempted portion, and how it doesn't always make sense, and how it works in the system. She, in front of a jury of twelve, or whatever it is, I think can explain that away. And so, they're professional, they know how to do that. They have a captured audience. But out there, when we don't have a captive, captive audience, and we have people out there that are willing to take a risk with my identity and your identities and whatever, I think it's a felony. So I'm, I'm really up here at an esoteric, whatever, level, and I have a real hard time supporting changing what is referred to. Councilmember Brown.
So, I, uh, I think we probably have trouble finding people that have not been affected by identity theft. It's a very common thing. And, uh, I really do empathize and congratulate you for not having had that happen.
Yet.
Let's hope it doesn't happen anytime soon. Uh, however, I'm trying to look at this from a way that we can be effective for people that have been victimized, as a city. Unfortunately, or fortunately, we're not the county council, we are the city council. And so to me, it seems that the proposed change here, from what we can do, or decide not to do, it would seem like adopting this would give our prosecutors, uh, greater effectiveness in prosecuting successfully the crime of, uh, identity theft. Even though we don't, we cannot affect whether it's a felony, that has a prosecutorial discretion at the county level, but it would seem like the most we can do would be adopt this, so that we have the greater chance of prosecuting from this level. I think if we have a commitment by our city prosecuting attorney and the city attorney supervising that process, that they will make every attempt to, uh, refer back to the county prosecuting attorney's office to request them to reconsider that decision to not prosecute. And then, in addition, have the ability to have a more effective, accurate, uh, charging of more than an attempt to create an actual committing of a crime charge. Uh, I think we're doing the mostest that we can, from the city level, to have people that commit this heinous, heinous crime against our citizens, oftentimes the most vulnerable citizens. We're doing the most that we can to affect punishment if we make this change. And I feel horrible for my friends that have experienced this, because I know what it feels like, too. Anyway, sometimes it's done by people that are related to you. So that makes it even worse. But, um, then I just wanted, no. So I, I, I'm in favor of this change, so I'll just say that.
Well, we'd like a little bit more information, if we, at least, on what the volume is, um, that we're looking at, I believe, as it relates to cases that the prosecutor does for us, uh, the King County prosecutor does, and those that bump, that are bumped to us.
What I know I can get you fairly quickly is information from our case-tracking system of what we've done on attempted identity theft, and what we've charged and why. And so I can get those numbers, and then depending on the size of them, I can dig into those files a little deep, more deeply, and see what the basis for those were.
Okay.
So let me start with that, and see if that gets you the information.
Now, I think that we are research-based enough that if you took... Now, I think that we are research-based enough that if you took a sampling, like two months or a month, that we could extrapolate. I don't think you have to go back years and years and years, though there may be months that there's more identity theft done than others. But we rely on you to not make it into a 30-hour project.
Right. We'll see if we can do a quick search to see what we can come up with.
Yeah. Do you, does everyone feel comfortable or have any other requests for information? Yes, please, Councilmember DeCorsi.
If you can, Steve, we really would like to have at least some idea of what the county prosecutor is not doing in relation to over a thousand dollars, if that's possible.
See if we can pull that information.
Yeah.
That would be a question of what the police department refers up to the county and what they do with those.
And then also, you've mentioned here our neighboring cities. To me, it would be interesting in knowing, and I don't want to put through an extensive process with this, but what are other cities and counties outside of South County doing? And you mentioned City of Seattle here, but it's interesting knowing if we have a kind of a general consensus, in relation to this, with a number of cities saying, "We do the same thing because." Or if we, in King County, are kind of unique in how this is being handled. I know you mentioned Pierce County. I've seen where Pierce County has done prosecutions related to identity theft as a Class C felony. And I know a public defender down there, who happens to be a fellow Italian, who has shared with me some of the things he goes through in relation to identity theft in Pierce County, and how those are prosecuted and how they turn out in that respect. But I think a little broader, kind of a sense of what this is doing would be very helpful for me as well.
Let me start with the numbers I can get for you easily, and then see if that answers your questions before we try to, because if we start calling other jurisdictions and asking them for information, they're gonna be like, "Yeah, we're busy." We can give it a try, and maybe we can get some anecdotal evidence from their prosecutors.
So, Steve, if we happen to know someone from another city, could we do that? Could we ask them what they do?
It would probably be quicker or easier for me to roll it into my report if you could provide that contact with us or ask them to give me your hairy boshe a call. And so we can put all the information together in one place.
All right. I'm meeting with a Superior Court judge from our jurisdiction, and I'll see if he can't share his information with both of you.
Sure. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're gonna take a 10-minute break, and then we'll move into the next half.
It's hard to see that. It's hard to figure out what line goes to where. You have to have a ruler.
Oh, yeah. And it's a little bit above. It goes above rather than below for which line it goes with.
Yeah.
Okay, I think the 10 minutes, and we're all back here. So I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Yolanda, who is the facilitator or the chair of the Human Services Ad hoc or Subcommittee or Focus Group.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. So we're gonna start out with the Human Services. They're gonna tell us 2019 and 2020 Human Services funding recommendation. So could you introduce yourselves, please?
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Joy Scott. I'm the Human Services Manager for the City of Auburn.
And I'm Emily Pearson, and I am the Human Services Program Coordinator.
Thank you so much for having us. So earlier this year, I was at a study session, I believe in March, where we gave everybody a timeline of our Human Services funding process. So we are currently at our September item, which is after our committee has worked for a number of months deliberating and finalizing a set of recommendations. We now have them available for you. We have one item that we handed out just right at the start of the meeting that was a request. You had received the 1718 funding recommendations and the 1920 as two separate documents in the packet. And we received a request to put them into one spreadsheet with the funding recommendations side on the side. So that's the document that we handed out right at the beginning of this meeting. So I wanted to give you just a little bit of context for what we saw in the application cycle for the 19 to 20 biennial funding cycle for our Human Services general fund dollars. We received 83 applications, so that's 83 programs, from 63 agencies and close to $1.5 million in total requests for funding. I went back over our records from previous cycles. And just to give you some context of what that looks like, in the 15 to 16 cycle, we received 69 applications from 47 agencies totaling just over $903,000 in requests. And in the 1718 cycle, we received 65 applications from 48 agencies totaling just over $937,000 in requests. So there's been a significant increase in the number of applications that we're reviewing as well as the total request of funding. And that was with roughly the same amount of funding allocations that the committee had to consider. So just to lay out our process for you so that you know what the committee has been working on, I do want to emphasize that this is a tremendous amount of work for our Human Services Committee. I brought, just to show, this is the binder that our committee members each received, one on each side, with our applications. In addition to having five months of extended meetings to deliberate and hear presentations from programs and agencies, the committee was required to read over 1,300 pages of applications and rate each one, and then go through a deliberative process to take the $1.5 million in requests down to the $490,000 that you see in front of you this evening. So we had a six-week open application cycle for our agencies. It closed on April 10th of 2018. During the open period, applicants were offered multiple workshops and technical assistance from city staff so that they could receive some assistance in completing their application if they had any questions. We reviewed all submitted applications to ensure that they had attached all of the required documentation. They're required to attach budgets, letters of financial findings from audits, insurance, liability status, things like that. We had the applications and the rating guides provided to our committee members, and they heard presentations in June, July, and August during extended meetings from those agencies and had their final deliberations just last week at our September 17th. It was about three and a half hours at the end, Human Services Committee meeting. Prior to the application review process, committee members were also required to identify any conflicts of interest. And they needed to recuse themselves from all deliberation and discussion regarding those applications. So we do have a couple of committee members who are engaged in nonprofit agencies in the community, and they were not present when those applications were being discussed. So we provided an extensive rating tool to our committee members, and they had to consider all of the following factors when they were rating each of the 83 applications. The agency needed to address an urgent need that is relevant to Auburn, that they have the experience and ability to manage that program, that they meet one or more of the Auburn funding priorities, that the program services are accessible to Auburn residents, the program is inclusive and intentional in serving culturally diverse populations, that the program actively partners with other service providers, and program performance measures appear realistic and reasonable for the request, and that the agency service units are reasonable for the funds that are requested. In addition, they also needed to ensure when reviewing budget documents that the service unit, service cost per unit appeared reasonable, that the program itself was financially stable, that the program outcomes were valid and achievable, that the program was unique and doesn't duplicate other services in Auburn, that the program is customized to meet Auburn's needs, that staff have worked to develop relationships in the Auburn community, and also that the agency has the capacity to gather program data and compile accurate reports in a timely manner. I wanted to make a quick note about duplication, because we had a number of conversations about it in the context of our committee meetings. So it was really important that when we talk about duplication, that that is considered within the context of need. So, for example, last weekend, you might have seen the news reports about the medical and dental clinic that happens every year at Key Arena. During that event, they opened tents starting at 12:30 a.m. every day, and folks had to stand in line until 5:30 a.m. when they started issuing tickets. At the end of their 1,000-ticket quota for the day, a number of people were still turned away each day for needed medical and dental services. So the fact that there are multiple... So the fact that there are multiple categorically similar services doesn't always mean that there isn't enough need to meet that. There might be multiple medical clinics that we fund, but they could be accessing different populations with different considerations for accessibility around language or physical accessibility or cultural appropriateness. Or there just might not be enough services for the need that we see in the community. And we often hear that for things like eviction prevention funds. Homelessness prevention is a big consideration of, it has been of this council and certainly in South King County. It's been extremely important. And we've heard repeatedly that there just aren't enough programs that are providing homeless prevention services.
How is that dental advertised?
So that.
For other people in our city.
For the Key Arena event?
Yeah.
It's emailed out to service providers. I know that it also goes out to all emergency managers and the community communication networks. There are email blasts that go out and public health sends out alerts.
It's also on TV.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And the radio?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
So I just wanted to touch on, again, the figure that we're bringing to you tonight. It's the same as our 2017 to 2018 funding level, which is 490,000. That is what our funding recommendations for the 1920 cycle add up to in the documents that were included in your packet. That is equal to 0.76% of the 2017 General Fund expenditures. This refers just to our competitive Human Services funding process, not to any direct allocations that might occur in other spaces or that the council might choose to make. And so that you know what the process is, once we contract, when agencies receive Human Services contracts with our team, they're required to submit quarterly reports to meet service unit targets and overall outcomes. They undergo regular monitoring and data audits by staff. And they have to keep the city informed of any staff or programmatic changes or any changes to their service model. So it is quite a lot that we ask of the agencies that we work with on an ongoing basis.
Just got a quick question. Can you go back to the last slide?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Okay. The, it looks like there was relative to the budget, like a 0.09% relative decrease in funding. I say relative to the General Fund expenditures. It may not seem like a lot, but what, could you characterize why that, it didn't keep up with the increase in General Fund expenditures?
So as far as I'm aware, and since I've only been here about a year, I might need to refer to my director to answer this as well. I don't believe that there is a formal resolution that the council has made of a particular amount that is funded each year. And we did not receive any specific direction to increase or decrease the funding level that we had for the last cycle. So when we generated the numbers, we were told to work with the same budget from last time.
So it's okay, good.
That's some, that's not true.
I thought I wasn't able to speak.
No, you're not. No, you're not. No, you're not. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Dana?
That is true. What we hear from finance is that the 1% is a matter of practice, not policy. It's something that sort of evolved over the years. So, you know, we get, we get the number from finance and that's the number that we work with.
Okay.
And that one, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say that 1% would equal roughly 641,000, slightly over.
Does that answer your question?
If it does.
Yep. Mr. Brown?
Well, actually, relatively speaking, the General Fund expenditures has gone up a greater amount than the, and the expenditures for social services have remained flat. My only point.
Okay.
Well, and this is again, if I'm correct, be sure. And correct me if I'm wrong, but this is only a part of what we do to help our citizens because this is the General Fund match. And we have the federal portion, the block grant. And so it would be really nice, though we get things confused, or I get things confused, if sometimes we could pull them together and show totally what we are doing to meet the human needs. Again, for our audience, this is just what we match out of the General Fund. And we've got housing repair and some really incredible things. Plus, out of the block grant, we also pay for some administrative, minimal administrative costs to help us with this.
Yeah, that's certainly true that we also receive CDBG dollars, that we can put 15% of that towards public services. And typically, those funds have gone towards medical and dental services and employment training in the community. When we look at other South King County cities and where they're at with their Human Services, most other South King County cities fall between 1.5% and 2%, not including the CDBG. So they tend to have 1.5% or 2% in addition to their CDBG dollars. So we wanted to include just a few different charts to help navigate the list of recommendations. I know that it's a lengthy list and a number of programs that are included. So we wanted to try and break down the recommendations that the committee has made to make these programs available to Auburn residents. This chart provides a small picture. What we were hoping to do is really just break down a little bit the types of services that the programs on the recommendation list are receiving. Now, of course, there are programs that address multiple needs. So we try to identify the best one. But for example, somebody who, who has a need for employment services might also benefit from access to food programs or low-cost medical and dental services. You know, they might benefit from homelessness prevention or shelter services. So there's really quite a lot of crossover. And a lot of these programs provide wraparound services that go across multiple categories. I also wanted to highlight something that I felt was really indicative of what we're seeing in the community. We received some data just last week from Mary's Place, which operates the family shelter intake line for King County. So any family that is unsheltered, that is experiencing literal homelessness in King County, in order to access shelter, they call the Family Shelter Intake Line, which is operated by Mary's Place. And they brought data demonstrating what they were hearing from, in particular, South King County families who were calling this line. And in the first two quarters of 2018, nearly a quarter of all families who were unsheltered, who were homeless in our, in our community were fleeing domestic violence as the primary cause of their homelessness. So it really shows the connection between things like homelessness prevention, domestic violence services, access to food, medical, mental health, or behavioral health services. It really is.
And how many families did they serve from Auburn, did you say?
So total, they had 612 calls in the first quarter and 987 in the second quarter. That was total from.
That's calls or actually taken care of families?
Calls.
That's calls to the family shelter intake line?
And how many families did they take care of out of those 600 or 900 people?
So they placed folks into shelter? They don't, they don't just put them in their shelter? They're the ones who coordinate their entry into any shelter in King County?
Because I've been, I've been wondering that ever since I've been, have been a council person. I've been asking, you know, who's taking care of our people here? And I have never actually seen any numbers, actually how many families are being taken care of from our city? And that would be really nice to know. Because I know that in our city, our highest calls are domestic violence with our police department. So how many of those people are actually becoming homeless? That would be nice to know. How many of those women are being displaced or, you know, placed? That's another thing that would be nice to know. So anyways, that's why I asked how many, if those were calls or actually people being placed?
Sure. So they offer services to everyone who calls the intake line. Not everyone chose to disclose their location. So only about half of the callers chose to say where, where it was that they were calling from or where they had spent the last night. Of those callers, there were 29 who were in Auburn when, at the time that they called. But I could certainly have them bring some additional detailed information.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So this next slide, you'll know we have two different pie charts on there. And that's because in the way that the resolution was laid out earlier this year, this.
Could I ask you to go back to this chart?
Sure.
You've got the Immigration and Refugee Services. What is that?
Which particular programs or?
Yeah, what?
So let me just.
Ukrainian, your Africa, Mother Africa, your.
Yeah. So we have Somali Youth and Family Club is one of the organizations that provides immigrant and refugee-specific services. Lutheran Community Services Northwest provides counseling services to refugees who've experienced trauma. The Ukrainian Community Center of Washington. Programs that are specifically intended to serve immigrant and refugees. So in the resolution that the council passed earlier this year, adopting funding priorities, the way that it was adopted and approved by the council was in these kind of two different sets. And so we have some duplication across those two sets. And it wasn't clear cut to be able to create a pie chart with 12 or 14 things on it. So I wanted to separate those out a little bit and just demonstrate where these all fell. And of course, the priorities that we have listed here are from the applications that we received. The committee can only make recommendations based on who has applied to us. And so if we have fewer applicants in the pool from one area or another, that's often recommended in where the recommendations play out. We also wanted to highlight the service location. As I mentioned before, every single program has been vetted to ensure that it is accessible to Auburn residents. But Auburn does not have agencies physically that provide every needed service. So the committee has to consider which services are vitally important to our community members but may not have a physical presence in the community. Things like family, Auburn doesn't have a family shelter. But we know that shelter is incredibly important. And we have a single adult shelter. And we rely on our, on our neighboring cities and communities that offer some of those other services. There are some domestic violence and sexual assault services that don't exist physically within Auburn and certainly some culturally specific services. So this is just a breakdown showing that of, of the recommendations that are provided to you tonight, 38% are available in Auburn. So they have outreach workers or staff who are present on the ground in Auburn. But their physical home location for their agency is, is in a different community. That 29% are physically based in Auburn as their primary location and that 33% are based elsewhere, but still accessible to Auburn residents. We also wanted to highlight the, the program history. I know in looking at some of the lists across the previous recommendations for the last few biennial funding cycles, a lot of times those lists have stayed relatively similar. However, it's incredibly vital that agencies are shifting to meet the current and ever-changing needs in the community. And we wanted to show that about 65% of the recommendations here tonight Auburn has funded previously. But we have 11% that were new programs and 24% that are very well-established programs but that Auburn has not funded before. We have a range of ages that are served by the programs that are on this recommendation list. If programs have a specific target audience or primarily serve a certain population, then we've highlighted that in this chart. Programs like Volunteer Tour Services, which is really meant to serve primarily seniors, or the Auburn Respite Program, which serves folks living with dementia and Alzheimer's. And they typically serve more seniors than they do other ages. About 50% of the programs are geared towards all ages. 6% are towards seniors. 21% are adults. 17 are youth. And then 6% are the zero to five early childhood.
So on this pie chart, it's, it's possible to be in two sections of the pie.
The way that we identified the programs were we made a determination based on who they primarily serve. So if their program is, is open and accessible to all ages, that's listed under all ages. But if that, they primarily serve seniors or they have a special focus on seniors, they would just be under seniors. We also wanted to show the population focus based on income. So it's incredibly common for things like housing services or some medical or mental health services to be sliding scale or based on income. Or certainly in the case of, of things like financial assistance, only available to folks living on low incomes or no incomes, as the case may be. However, some services are incredibly important for people of all incomes to be able to access. You know, we think about things like sexual assault services, which impacts folks in every income bracket. Teen suicide prevention is something that we want to make sure is available to all teens and not just low-income teens. So we just wanted to show that close to half, 48%, are specifically targeting low-income populations. 23% are low to moderate income populations. And then 29% of the programs on the recommendation list serve all incomes.
So John, Joyce?
Yes.
The question that Margot asked, how do we know that they're not going to several places? Like you have low income and then you have, mentioned about the teens and stuff. And what if they qualify for both of those, low or, you know?
So this is what the program stipulates as who can access the program. So if the program is accessible to, to any income and they don't check income, then we have categorized that as available to all incomes. But if, if the program asks for things like pay stubs or does income verification with a family or looks at big statements, anything like that, and has a threshold, then we've, we've qualified that as either low income if they're only serving folks in that low income category.
They do ask for pay stubs and stuff like that?
Any programs do.
Okay.
Not every program. So we've tried to show that here, that you might not be asked for income. But the financial assistance programs all ask for actual documentation of income.
All right.
So if I look at page 43 of 51, and take the homeless prevention, housing stability percentage of 40% and add, add it to the other pie of homeless prevention and housing stability of 33%, we can say that 73% of the 500,000 that is in this program goes to homelessness and prevention and housing stability and prevention?
So these are actually two standalone charts. So they can't be added together. The first one just looks at the funding priorities that are these lower three. The homelessness prevention. The homelessness prevention and housing stability, food access and healthcare. And breaks out all of the programs into just those and then an other category for ones that don't match. The second pie chart is looking at the full list of recommendations again, but breaking it out based on the top set of priorities. Because otherwise, we would have had a duplicated, a couple of duplicated items and then some that didn't quite fit together.
Do you have any questions?
Maybe a comment. I appreciate some of these very much where, like Anu, know a little bit about that. That's where we're teaching people to fish rather than giving them fish. And to the extent that we can do that, it seems to me that people appreciate that. Or not, in the future maybe is vulnerable. So that's a non-traditional trick, you know, getting women into the trades where they can earn good money, working these top blue collar jobs. Anyway, it looks like a great list. Thank you for the work that you do. And I, by the way, I've read grant requests before. I'm sure several other people on this council have. It's a lot of work, so.
It is.
Thanks to the committee.
On your second page, you have Saint Stevens Housing Association, where is that at?
Their building? They do have an apartment building in Auburn. They're, yes.
Is that a Catholic? No?
So they provide shelter and case management for homeless families with children.
Just below that though, kind of, it says late application, incomplete budget, incomplete application. But that's referring to something that's blank.
So the column, the column on the far right is to explain the differences between the 17 to 18 funded amounts and the 19 to 20 recommended amounts. It's not a straight one-for-one list. There are some agencies that currently receive funding that were not recommended for funding by our Human Services Committee. So those notes are to provide the explanation as to why. There might be a blank there where there was not a recommendation.
Okay, so the agency is not listed, but you chose not to fund it because it was late in its application and?
So that particular, those notes, I'm sorry, the way that this printed out is a little bit confusing. Those notes are actually not for the Saint Stephen Housing Association, they're for the Auburn Food Bank, the next one down, because it goes slightly above rather than slightly below.
And so the Food Bank is not being funded?
They were not included in the recommendations for funding by the committee because of those reasons that are listed there.
On the first page on top, Aerospace Joint Apprenticeship Committee?
Yes.
This is on here, incomplete budget programs, they're small numbers of residents.
So that's for Anu?
And is that disability people? Or what's the training for?
So the, yes, so the notes are specific to Anu rather than the Aerospace Joint Apprenticeship Committee. But the Aerospace Joint Apprenticeship Committee is providing an advanced manufacturing training center in Kent that provides workforce development, career navigation and job placement services. And it's focused on moving folks who are living on low incomes into living wage careers.
Okay, go ahead.
So Anu is not funded for next year?
Not recommended.
Okay. It would be really helpful.
Missed read.
It would be helpful, because we got bad eyes, well, I have bad eyes. If we had lines, though I don't know if you could do it, and then we complain about how all the lines run together, but it's kind of hard to track them.
Sure, and it might be easier, so this was a request to have the comparative chart. It might be easier for the list of recommendations to refer to, there was a two-page.
In your packet.
In your packet that's just the 19 to 20 applications. I don't know if that's easier to read? Or if it's just as difficult. We can certainly create one with lines and send it right over to you. Because it is hard to read across.
One of the things that we asked, I think you asked last year, maybe you can speak for that, because I'm not real sure.
Well, we did this, we had to have, looking at the agency's budget and what percentage of the budget is the amount we're funding compared to their total budget.
Okay.
And also, the number of people they serve, the number of Auburn residents they actually serve with their program.
Yes. We can provide both of those very easily.
Yeah, we've been asking for those, and we have not.
I'm so sorry, I did not receive that request for this time, but I'm happy to put that together for you.
Yeah, we did get that last time, so.
Oh, okay. So the percentage of the recommended.
Service units, the cost per unit, the number of Auburn people served in total budget.
Okay.
Yeah. I would like a copy of the rating tool. Blank. Yeah.
Might even have one, I'll check. We can get that to you.
Any further questions?
I have some statements.
Yeah, okay.
I think that Councilmember Brown alluded to this being about the same amount of money as we've had last year. And I have some real concerns about spreading it out over more organizations when we don't have enough to really totally meet the needs. And we had to cut back on some people's requests. But I think that would be offset by the numbers that previously applied that you funded that you didn't this year. So one of your graphs says, you know, you've got 11% new. But I think we need to include in there those that no longer showed interest, or they didn't get their stuff inside. So we can balance that new against all. Because one of the things that historically this group has had some concerns about is the old, Rich Wagner, peanut butter and jelly spread. Where we just keep spreading it thinner and thinner and spreading it out over more. But if you can offset that with things like the Food Bank that you did not fund, Auburn Communities and Schools and some of those others, it doesn't show the peanut butter and jelly approach as much.
Actually, Rich never used jelly, just peanut butter.
Peanut butter spread, yes.
So you're asking for the number of agencies that were funded in the 17, 18 cycle but did not apply, is that correct?
Yes.
So we have four agencies, and they're noted on this chart with the note did not apply.
How many new ones did you pick up?
That's a good question.
But I also, I also noticed that you increased on some of these, like the Pregnancy Crisis Center. She was getting $5,000, you increased it up to $5,500.
That was $5,500 in both years. So the $5,000 was provided to Anu in 2017 and 2018.
Okay, okay.
I don't know that there were, you know, like I said, we took about, it took about three and a half hours for us to get from one and a half million down to 490,000. I would say that the last 15 minutes were probably the hardest of, you know, when you've already made a lot of cuts, what are those remaining cuts? And I think that there were very few agencies that actually received an increase over what they had received last time. And that was very much based on their performance in the last funding cycle and also the experiences of the committee members when they audited those programs.
I don't have a problem with increases. I do, once again, have problems with the King County Bar Foundation. I have problems with training programs, because I don't feel that that's our mission. I have problems with crisis lines when I know the Food Bank, or not the Food Bank, but King County Public Health has and manages the crisis lines. I know that the King County, Seattle King County Board of Health pays for the van. And we're giving it $12,000 for a van that's already been paid for. Those are the concerns I've been voicing for a couple of years. But otherwise, I love the diversity that you're showing with some of the other groups that need support. But I don't see training as our, we should be, but we, based on the priorities that we established as policy, healthcare, food access and homelessness, especially with the state crisis and homelessness, I have some concerns. And then as a side note, but I know you can't do anything about it, I am really kind of devastated that the Lutheran Community Services Northwest, who does so much for dental, didn't get their stuff in on time because that was one of our primary providers for dental care outside of what we have up there on the East Hill and in public health is dental clinic.
So Lutheran Community Services Northwest was recommended for funding at $4,000. It was a new application in 1920?
I gave you the wrong one, I am so sorry. I'm thinking about the little one that's right over here, Christ Community Free Clinic.
I see.
That one's the one. And they do so much work. I help them recruit dentists, you know? And so that's the one I'm concerned about. Okay.
And these are, again, these are simply recommendations from the Human Services Committee. So any additional deliberations that council has are certainly available. These are just the, you know, the opinions based on the experts that we have in the room and the applications that we receive from the agencies.
Yes, Mr. Holman?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to extend a heartfelt thank you to the Human Services Committee. I know this takes a lot out of the committee members. It just must pull at their heartstrings to make difficult decisions like this. And I really want to thank them for their efforts. And I believe that they're making a difference in this community. And I base that on just observations. I was driving through a city to our west, who's unnamed, and I was seeing four and five panhandlers on every intersection. I was seeing aggressive panhandling in the mall, private property. And yet, when I come down to Auburn, I'm getting input from people like my colleague, Bill Pelosi, and other people that are observing less aggressive panhandling in places like the Safeway parking lot, less transient behavior in Les Gove Park, because of things like we're spending money on and supporting. So I think by observation, we're making a difference in this city, that we're not just throwing dollars and not caring about results. So I think we're making a difference. It's not to say that we don't have aggressive panhandling, it's not to say that we don't have transient behavior, but we are making a difference. That's my two cents, thank you.
We'll be sure to pass that along to our Human Services Committee members.
Appreciate that very much.
So when do you think you can get us some more, when does this have to be approved? And when can you get us some more information so that we don't have the Times Crunch put on you?
So I believe that these are approved as part of your normal council budget process. I actually haven't been through this process before, so I might have to defer to one of my colleagues.
So it's not coming to our council very quickly? Thank you. So just another clarifying, the new applicants for 19 and 20 are not going to be funded, is that what I heard?
No, the, this comparative chart, and the notes are to explain any blank. So if you notice that an agency was recommended for funding this year, but there was a blank in the current funding, that they are not currently being funded, we've made an explanation as to why there's that blank. So for many of them, it's that they were a new applicant. And the reason they weren't funded previously is because they've never applied previously. And then if there is a blank in the 19 to 20 recommendations, it means it's not on our recommended funding list, and there's a note, explanation as to why they're not recommended for funding.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
We currently have a family at a, in a protective shelter situation, a domestic violence family. And I think the program's supervised by Mary's Place. Where is that covered in the budget? Is that in this, or is that in the going-to-be-half-a-million homeless budget that's going to come to us? Where is it at?
So I don't believe that we're actually putting funds toward that. There was a home that was acquired with CDBG funds a while ago, and we do have a lease agreement with Mary's Place, but we're not paying.
No water, heat?
Mary's Place covers the costs for that program.
Is that covered in this Mary's Place? So where's it appear?
So we don't have any expenses for that program. So it's not in any budget document because we're not having to pay anything out of our general fund for it.
But how do we justify that they're doing this?
We have a lease agreement and MOU with Mary's Place, that they provide these services and we provide them with the house. Okay, we can provide a copy of that agreement if you'd like to see it.
I'd like to see that too, please. Realizing that the location's confidential. Yes.
Thank you.
No more questions? Thank you. I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, now we're going to go to Roman numer five, other discussion items.
You know, I have something that I wanted to ask the attorney about. The bridge on Am Street, the underpass, there's always graffiti painted on there. I see that we have two staff going out there and keep painting that. Can we do something about putting cameras? Can the city put cameras up there to detect who is doing all that graffiti?
I don't believe that bridge belongs to us. Is that a, Ingrid, is that a Burlington Northern Bridge?
So portions of that bridge are our responsibility for maintenance. And so we do go out and do some maintenance, especially for graffiti out there. As far as putting up cameras, that's really a question of power and location for being able to monitor that location. But it's really no different than many, many, many other locations in town that get tagged often.
Okay. Because I see that in Seattle, they have taken some walls that were constantly being tagged and everything. And they went and they hired, well, they asked artists to come and paint some beautiful scenery on there. And instead of us seeing those big old nasty graffiti and our staff constantly going out there and painting, I thought either cameras to detect who's doing that or to keep people from doing that or doing something else.
And we do have a camera on the Fourth Street intersection itself. It just depends upon what we happen to be watching at that intersection as to whether we see any of that activity.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Does anyone feel the need to have it added to the matrix to talk about graffiti? I think we've recently talked about it, but does this answer your question enough?
Could we bring it to the council to have more discussion on it? Do you think it's an important topic to talk about? Some of our main roads, bridges and bypasses that we have, and you see these graffitis all the time?
Councilmember DeCorsi?
We had a presentation on graffiti and gain violence, you know, a while back. But maybe just as a refresher, because we are seeing, again, some areas of the city with an increased amount of graffiti again, regain tagging. So perhaps we can get another update on to where we are with that program.
Okay, well, let's hold that to look at, maybe when we get to the matrix. Okay, well, let's hold that to look at, maybe when we get to the matrix.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other discussion items. Thank you, Ingrid, thank you very much. Okay, let's move to new business. Okay, now the matrix.
Ted, that graffiti to come back.
And I think that goes under what, municipal services or...
Municipal services.
Okay.
I believe I'm up for next study session, ten-eight. And we have a cost of services study, planning and development fees. So that will be Director Coleman and Director Tate.
Councilmember DeCorsi?
Public Works, Public Works focus area. The item number three, the ad hoc committee report, we'd like to have that done on the twenty-ninth of October, on the fifth of Monday, because it's going to take us probably an hour or longer to go through that presentation and discussion, perhaps even longer than that. And then also under staff leads, it should be noted that Director Galb and Director Coleman are providing input for that as well as staff lead.
Councilmember Holman?
And what do you think adding another line to finance and economic development in that legal is also under my focus area, where we have round three for identity theft? Particularly, perhaps, difficulties in prosecution by not having an accurate... Well, I'll, I'll leave that up to your presentation, something that would be, we'd ask for some pieces of information here. Perhaps it'll be a good time to present it.
What date would that be?
That'd be ten-eight.
Ten-eight? Okay.
And you're looking troubled.
I may not have any information for you in a week and a half.
We're not going to hold your feet to the fire. We can always adjust. We want to work with you and not create more work for you.
And, you know, perhaps the best way would be to just pick a case that was declined by, just a case, a test case, that was declined by King County, that we then picked up and prosecuted as an attempt, and the difficulties in case prep, the difficulties from investigation on the part of the police, and the, just a single case, walk it through from beginning to end to help our understanding that this isn't a way of getting easier, it's something rather than nothing.
Let me see everything together.
Just one case, just a suggestion. And that would be the only thing I'd add to my matrix for that day.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes, thank you. The question I have for my fellow council members is on November thirteenth, the municipal services area, special focus area is going to be discussed. Would it be your judgment that all three of those items on eleven thirteen would fit into our, a reasonable amount of time for our meeting?
I think that, Tom, you probably worked that out with Nancy, aren't you the chair of that group?
I am.
Then Nancy and our council, our mayor back us, and you will kind of...
Talk that over.
Talk that overnight.
Talk that over with those department.
And we can kind of rely on your best guess, but I think you are right that they could be lengthy, but very creative and exciting.
I'm excited already.
Yeah. Anything else for the good of the order? Then I will adjourn. Thank you.